I thought this was going to be easier. Sorry for the delay. We are going to call the meeting to order. Welcome, everyone. Pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10-4-10, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by advertising such notice in the Home News Tribune, the Asbury Park Press, the Board Office, the schools, and on Cablevision Channel 118 and Verizon, Fios Channel 24, and by filing such notice with the township clerk. This meeting was scheduled for Thursday, May 6, 2021. The Board will meet to officially act upon the adoption of the 2021-2022 school year budget. Mr. Mara?
Thank you, Mr. Carroll. The Old Bridge Township Board of Education acknowledges that the law of this state establishes that members of the public, including members of the Board, have the right to record public board meetings using audio or video recording devices, provided that that act of recording does not interfere with the business of this public board meeting. Therefore, the Board makes it known that any such recording is to be considered the private recording of the individual and in no manner represents the official record of this Board. The Board therefore takes no responsibility for such private recording and completely disavows any future use.
Roll call, Mr. Mara?
Ms. Burns?
Here.
Ms. Calley?
Here.
Mr. De Prima?
Here.
Mr. Dunn?
Here.
Ms. Ellis Foster?
Here.
Mr. Giordano?
Mr. Giordano sends his apologies. He won't be able to make the meeting tonight.
Mr. Solakowski?
Here.
Mr. Weber?
Here.
Mr. Carroll?
Here.
Quorum exists.
Okay. Can we all please rise for the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. So, Mr. Mara? Should we?
Thank you, Ms. Calley. Oh, Mr. Carroll, I'm sorry. Would all the Board members kindly move to the audience so we can drop the screen so that we can see the presentation? They should sit in the middle. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Carroll. Thank you, Mr. Kudjuski. Welcome to the public hearing to adopt the 2021 budget for the township, for the Old Bridge Township School District. The outline for tonight's presentation is as follows. Board members and the administrative team will be introduced. Mr. Sittadino and Dr. Holker will discuss student activities, district accomplishments, and district priorities. I will discuss appropriations, revenues, and taxes. Then Mr. Sittadino will do a final summary, and then we will open up the meeting for public comment. So, to introduce the Board members, I'll just introduce them by name. If they can each stand and turn and wave to the public, that would be fine. So, Ms. Jill DeCaro, the President. Ms. Teresa Burns, the Vice President. Ms. Jill Calley, Board Member. Mr. Salvador De Prima, Board Member. Mr. Richard Dunn. Ms. Kelly Ellis Foster. And Mr. Matthew Solakowski. And Mr. Frank Weber. Thank you, Board members. The Superintendent of Schools is Mr. David Sittadino. The Assistant Superintendent of Schools is Dr. Kathleen Holker, sitting to my right. The second Assistant Superintendent of Schools is Dr. James Tooe, who's in the audience. And my name is Joseph Mara. I'm the Business Administrator and the Board Secretary for the District. In addition, manning the presentation tonight is Carol Lee Johnson, the Assistant Business Administrator, and she's sitting here also. Thank you very much, CJ. So, at this point, I will move the presentation to Mr. Sittadino.
At the center of tonight's budget presentation is, of course, the Old Bridge students. Our students take part in multiple activities throughout the district, and this year, a very unprecedented year, while the activities may have been different, the students still thrive. They took place in the classroom, in athletics, and in the arts. Our Old Bridge High School students-
Literacy was awarded to 22 students, recognizing bilinguals in French, Spanish, German, Italian, as well as Portuguese and Arabic. Two Old Bridge High School students, Nora Han Fahmi and Crystal Salvador, earned seals in two languages. Old Bridge High School World Language Honor Society inducted 187 students encompassing all five world languages. Old Bridge Middle School's Junior World Language Honor Society inducted 160 students in all five world languages. Old Bridge High School German students were selected to participate in the Goth Institute's Spark Program, created and inspired introductory German lessons for elementary student classrooms, and two students were, I'm sorry, Goth Institute were, are to award to students with scholarships to a summer study program. Elementary students of art recognized for state and national achievement. Michael McCabe was a finalist in the partnership for a drug-free New Jersey poster contest, and Abraham Mohammed was the first-place winner of the MIT's Cambridge Science Festival Art. Thirty Jonas Salk students were selected to receive the Certificate of Honor by Central Jersey Music Educators Association. Six Jonas Salk Middle School Scholarship recipients for the Louis Armstrong Award, John Philip Sousa Award, and National School Orchestra Award. Old Bridge High School music students received the Bronze Award at Arts Education Organization New Jersey State Festival. Sarah Brennan, an Old Bridge High School Grade 10 student, for the snare drum solo. The Old Bridge High School indoor percussion has performances May and June, along with the "We Are One" video created for social media platforms. An Old Bridge High School art student awarded for excellence, Mateo Andre in Grade 12. The artwork was published in "Celebrating Art in the Fall and Winter 2020 Art Contest." Sorry, it's a little dark up here, so I'm having trouble reading it. The girls, we are moving on to athletic accomplishments. Girls soccer and field hockey, both teams were Central Jersey Group Four semifinalists. Boys cross-country track and field, the cross-country invitational champions, seven-on-seven varsity team champions, and Middlesex County Invitational Champions. There were third-place Central Jersey Group Four state championships, finished the season ranked as one of the top 15 teams in the state, and Nick Maderos won the 1,000-meter final, running the fastest time in the United States this season. The girls' cross-country came in third place in the Middlesex County Invitational. Girls bowling completed the season with a record of eight and zero, finished undefeated for the first time in over 10 years. Wrestling, Gabrielle Miller won state wrestling championships. She is a two-time state champion. And Tyler Saggy won super-region championship. The Fred Cole Field, we celebrated and honored former head baseball coach, Mr. Fred Cole, by naming our high school baseball field after him. During the ceremony, we highlighted his incredible career in our district and the program. And a little fun fact, tonight was the first game played by our middle school baseball team on the Fred Cole Field.
Mr. Sittadino?
The budget that will be presented this evening-
Thank you. The budget that will be presented this evening has priorities in the following areas. Maintaining children learning in safe and healthy educational environments is our top priority. Expand on multiple learning platforms as needed with equipment, software, and professional development. Transition to block scheduling in middle school and high school. Maintain successful programs while continuing to deal with S2 fiscal realities. Continue to expand on offering clinical and therapeutic support for at-risk students. And meet the educational, social, emotional, and physical needs of all students.
Thank you, Mr. Sittadino. Next, on this slide, I've summarized the budget into seven individual categories. Overall, the district will be spending 1.24% more next year than it has budgeted this year. I will talk about each line item, however, I will delay talking about program costs until last. The employee benefits line, which is roughly 20% of the budget, contains costs for health insurance, prescription insurance, dental and vision insurance, workers' compensation costs, pension costs, payroll taxes, and other employee benefits. The projected decrease is approximately 1%, principally due to statutory changes in the benefit programs provided by the state that affect premiums and also employee benefit contributions. However, we do expect a 3% increase in prescription and dental premiums in 2021 and 2022. The maintenance and operation line, which is about 11% of the budget, contains costs for all the required maintenance in the district, snow removal, custodial services, security, and energy costs. The transportation line, approximately 6% of the budget, contains costs for the salaries to operate a fleet of approximately 50 buses, contracted services or outside vendors that provide daily busing for our students, and we transport approximately 8,500 students daily to and from school. It also includes fuel costs, maintenance of the buses, and administration of the entire operation. The state standard for transportation efficiency is 1.2% or 1.20 efficiency, and the Old Bridge efficiency rating is 1.76. So, we're well above the state-required 1.2 efficiency standard. The administrative cost line, roughly 6% of the budget, contains the cost of the staffing of all the main offices of all the schools, that's the school principals, secretaries, superintendent's office, the business office, and all district-wide technology. I urge all residents to review the Taxpayer Guide to Education on the New Jersey Department of Education website. Old Bridge is among the best in terms of efficiency of its operations. The tuition cost line, which is about 3% of the budget, contains costs for tuition of out-of-district private placements and for our students that go to vocational schools. And the capital outlay line, which is 1% of the budget, contains costs for technology, equipment, and facilities upgrades planned for next year. The next slide details the first-line item, program costs, which represents about 52% of the budget, or $80 million. It includes all our regular education programs, which has approximately 508 staff members, all our special ed programs, which has about 300 staff members, our academic support program, which has about 38 staff members, and staff members are certified staff and secretaries. Bilingual programs, we have 12 staff members, and all of our co-curricular and alternative programs. Some of our notable special ed programs that are offered in the district are learning disability programs, a behavioral disability program, a multiple-disabled program, a resource room program, an autism program, a preschool-disabled program, half-days, and a preschool-disabled program, full-day. To support all of our programs, we have the following district-wide services. We have attendant services. We have a health services, which are nurses and their secretaries, there are about 24 of those. We have, in our speech professionals, we have about 14 staff members there. We provide extraordinary services to many special ed students. We have a guidance staff that's approximately 39 staff members. Child study team staff, about 36 staff members. And we have 12 supervisors who monitor and ensure that our curriculum is up to the required curriculum as per the state guidelines. We also have educational media services, which is the TV studio and some library services, and we provide significant staff training on an annual basis to all staff members to keep them up to speed with what they need to know. So, that is program costs. Next slide, capital outlay summarizes what we will be doing next year in terms of our capital budget. So, right now, our intention is to replace the carpet and track at Lombardi Field. The last time it was, it was originally installed, I believe, was in 2006. It had a 12-year life, so it's well past the useful life of the carpet. We intend to start a program of window replacements in all the elementary schools, and we will continue to upgrade the technology in the classrooms and also the technology infrastructure, which allows us to get internet throughout the district. All of this will be funded through our reserve accounts, and none of it will be affected by the general tax levy. The next two line items, SDA grant assessment and capital reserve transfer. These are mandated numbers that are provided by the state that we really have no control over. We just have to budget those numbers each year because we did do a referendum in the last 20 years, and we're required to reimburse the state that money each year. The next slide is just another presentation, a pie presentation of the overall budget, $154 million budget. You can see the programmatic costs are 52%. It's the largest portion of the budget. Employee benefits, another 20%. Maintenance and transportation, 17%, and that's roughly 90% of the entire budget. Unusual items in the budget. The budget maintains, in this S2 environment, all existing educational programs, maintenance and security protocols despite significant decreases in state aid. Our net health premium reductions, as a result of these statutory reductions, in 2021, we hope will continue, and our capital outlay projects for the Lombardi Field and window replacements are unusual items. And we are upgrading our world language curriculum in 2020 and 21. Unusual items in revenue. We continue to lose state aid. Our state aid was reduced this year by $6 million. We are using $8 million, a little more than $8 million in reserves to cover the 2021 budget, the 2122 budget. Last year, we were only, we only used $3,768,000. The reason why we have such a significant amount in reserves to use for the subsequent year is because of COVID. We principally stopped spending money last year in March, and we had extra money that was not spent, and whenever we do not spend what is budgeted for, the district benefits from that in not the immediately following year, but in the subsequent year. So, the reserves are a result of, just to repeat that, reserves are a result of prior year unbudgeted revenue received or unspent appropriations that exceed the allowable 2% reserves of the district's annual expenditures. We are using $1,550,000 from capital reserve, and we're using it to fund the capital projects, and we are using $2 million from our maintenance and emergency reserve accounts. We also, we continue to benefit from the lease of the Cheesecake School, $500,000 a year for another nine years, and we will not have any back cap or automatic cap adjustments available to us in 2122. Revenue. The first item on the general fund revenue page is called budgeted fund balance. So, when a district approves its budget, the budget is a tool to manage the district finances, and it contains numerous estimates of revenue and expenditures. If the revenues received exceed the revenues budgeted, that excess revenue goes into what's called a fund balance. If actual expenditures paid are less than what our budget appropriates, that unspent appropriation goes into fund balance. The district may maintain 4% of that money of the previous year's expenditures in the fund balance called unrestricted fund balance. Legislation just passed during the COVID year increased that unrestricted fund balance from 2% to 4%, and that will be in effect for two years. Anything over that amount has to be transferred by Board resolution into our capital reserve, maintenance reserve, or emergency reserve accounts. Another word for these reserve accounts are, they're basically savings accounts for the district in order to fund additional projects in the future. The budgeted, so anything that is, anything that remains after transfers to the reserves and anything above the 2% or 4% unrestricted fund balance becomes revenue in the subsequent year. And as I mentioned before, in the 2020-2021 budget, the extra funding was $3,768,000. In next year's budget, we have $8,048,000. Reserve withdrawals. We are moving $3.55 million out of reserve withdrawals to fund the capital projects, maintenance, and our security costs. The local tax levy, the local tax levy line is the assessment to local taxpayers, and it contains a 2% increase. Under the new formula implemented by the state, their calculation is that the Old Bridge taxpayer should be paying $120 million in local tax levy. We're only paying $107 million. The state aid line, which has decreased by 15.94% or $6 million, is a major decrease for us. Fortunately, we had the reserve from unspent money last year to cover this reduction, but the state will continue to reduce our state aid for the next three years. In 2000, just to give you an idea how drastic these cuts have been, in 2018 and 2019, the district was receiving approximately $44 million in state aid. Next year, we're going to get $32 million. This will continue for at least three more years. The other state aid line, extraordinary aid, is aid received for special-needs students. This aid is not guaranteed, however, the state guidance for S2 districts that are losing money, and we're an S2 district that's losing money, they advise us to use this line to fill the gap if we can't, if we can't fund the major reductions in the state aid. We have not had to do this this year because we did have the extra money from unspent money in a prior year. The other revenue line is any other revenue that can't be categorized in any, cannot be categorized in any of the above categories. Example of this are the lease income that we receive for Cheesecake, interest income, miscellaneous tuition revenue, or refunds for purchases that we did not use in prior year. The next slide, please? Okay. So, the next slide is the 2021 tax rate calculation. This slide represents information necessary to calculate the tax rate and the impact on the average homeowner. There are really just three points to discuss here. The first is that the ratables have increased in the town by $31 million. The local tax levy that we're requesting here to support the proposed budget is a 2% tax increase. And the average, or the cost to the average homeowner with a tax-assessed value of $152,500 is $49.61 per year, or $4.13 per month. Once this budget is approved, a user-friendly budget and this presentation that you're looking at will be posted on the district website within 48 hours. I thank you very much for your patience and attention to this matter, and I will switch this back over to Mr. Sittadino for, so he can summarize the 2021-2022 budget.
In summary, the proposed budget for 2021 through 2022 supports educational programs despite continued reductions in state aid. It supports healthy learning environments across all schools. Provides funding to ensure all curriculum and resources are aligned with the New Jersey State standards and executive orders. Supports the community-driven Mission 2022 Strategic Plan. It maintains technology that is necessary to support the changing landscape of student learning. It provides academic, social, emotional support mechanisms for all learners regardless of their talents and abilities. And the budget reflects the mandatory requirements of S2 legislation and locally generated revenue streams. Thank you, Mr. Mara.
Thank you, Mr. Sittadino. That concludes our presentation for the budget. So, if the Board members would like to return to their- So if the board members would like to return to their seats.
Okay, so now we are on to the hearing of the residents. So if anybody has any questions regarding the budget, you may come up and speak now. You can come up to the podium if you'd like. Okay, seeing no, no speakers, we are going to move on to, I guess we need a motion. Ma'am, would you like to come up to the podium? Sure. Just please identify yourself.
Hi, my name is Melissa Keo. I'm the parent of Melody and Jack Keo in Carpenter Elementary School. And I know that COVID funding has been provided for our schools and I have not seen it for Carpenter Elementary that my children go to. So, you know, I'd like to state a few points that it's extremely disappointing to be at the end of the school year and only be given four hours of school per day. What happened to the planning strategy to provide our children with the education they deserve? Not nearly enough effort has been done. Other schools have implemented more planning in order to resume full days, and yet here we are. My children are age six and seven and are forced to attend a daycare for before and aftercare because Carpenter School cannot provide it. Toddlers circle around my children while coughing and sneezing in their face. Is that okay? If they can be in a daycare center, excuse me, surrounded by 20 to 30 kids, then why can't they be in school full time with before and aftercare? There's no excuses for that. My children come home there disappointed. They don't want to be around, surrounded by toddlers. They want to be surrounded by their friends. They want to kick a ball. I go up to the school, St. Ambrose. I went to communion practice for my daughter and there are kids after school kicking a ball to each other, laughing. Why can't my children be laughing at the school? That's not fair to them. What happened to all the COVID funding? Not one extra teacher, no HEPA filters, no Plexiglas, no effort to help our children succeed. How about letting our children sit at the desk and eat lunch like a human being? The three feet was, for CDC has stated that that's okay in schools that can't provide any less, anymore. But yet it's not provided for them. Why can't we open the cafeteria slash gym to provide space in that time? That's not fair to my children to sit on a floor next to a sewer drain and eat lunch or snack, I'm sorry, because we can't eat lunch because lunch, it can't be provided. Lunch has COVID, but snack doesn't. So I'm just confused about that. That's what I'm confused about because there is no rhyme or reason for a lot of things and these ridiculous rules. And us parents have had enough. Do the right thing and follow the other strategies other schools have provided and don't let our children suffer any longer. I think they suffered enough. My daughter has stated to me, she is upset. She can't handle being in school like this. She has come crying to me because she can't handle, and yes, I get it. I truly understand. I actually am a nurse. I work in ICU. I work with COVID patients. I have seen death, okay? And I realize that and I know all about it. And I get that we have to provide safety, but we also have to look at, out for our children and what's in their best interest, too. And I think we've come a long way for a year. It's been over a year now. And I think our children deserve more than what they have given us and what we can do for them. And I want to do more for my children, and I'm sure many parents want to do more for their children. It's very upsetting. And, you know, Mr. Sidedino, I, I always enjoyed phone calls prior to COVID and I've heard you speak. And I'm like, oh, you know, it's great. There he is speaking for our children. And, and I just want that back again. I really do. I just want our children in that environment again and us happy to be there again and it just, us happy to move forward. And I think we've been very stagnant and stationary and I think we can do more and I think we can move more forward, but we just need to utilize more tools, need to utilize, each and every one of us to, to move forward for us, do more for us because we deserve that. Our children deserve it for the most. Thank you.
Pertaining to the budget.
Yes, pertaining to the budget. Okay. For over the last year, you slammed down our throat, CDC guidelines.
I'm sorry, sir, can you identify yourself?
Yeah, sure. Keith McIsaac, all right?
Thank you.
CDC guidelines, making it a safe environment for the students and the teachers. On the budget, you all want to approve this field so you could all look nice and pretty. So Old Bridge could look nice and pretty and put together. But what you didn't approve, how about some air conditioners for the students that are sweating in the classrooms? Now the air has to be clean, am I correct? This teachers' union wanted HEPA filters all over the place so they could be in an environment that's safe. Not once in the budget was it mentioned about improving the students' lives in the classroom or the teachers. So you know what? I object to anything that you're going to blow this money on the field where, you know, you state it was due to be fixed. And in the last meeting, it was about the four-foot path around the outside of the track and you had a $37,000 estimate from some architect. You know what? You know, the way you're spending our money is ridiculous. You know, I have a little statement prepared, maybe, maybe I'll read this. Because, let's see, why is it in other districts that the superintendent answers to the board and not the other way around? You should not have the final say in anything, Mr. Sidedino. Any discussions concerning, concerning our children should be determined by the board. Here in Old Bridge, we know that's not the case. We also know that there are members on the board that will agree with you on anything you say. If these times have shown us anything, it has shown us that you and members of your board and the teachers' union only have your own interests in mind. You have never cared about the well-being of our children. All that you do is spew out negative projections on what might happen if this or that happens. In the real world, you move forward and you handle problems as they arise. Improvise or overcome, as the US Marines say. You would not be in your position, you should not be in your position if you can't come up with anything on your own. You sat back and you are not proactive at all. If we learned anything from all of this, it is that myself and a lot of other parents see your true colors and who you care about, and it's not our children. We do not trust you with our children's future. You don't need to answer this statement because we are tired of all your smooth-talking and circle answers. May God watch over us. Thank you.
Hi, Jay Slade. I've got two children in Carpenter Elementary School as well, and I'm also a disappointed parent. One of the slides that I saw up there was district accomplishments. One of the accomplishments you didn't list is how you've mentally exhausted all the parents of Old Bridge. If you look at the amount of people in the audience today, I hope you're not looking at it as that you guys won the battle, you've just exhausted all the parents. People don't show up, people don't call in anymore because like Keith just said, we get the same repetitive answers and no accomplishments. We've had 14 months to get a game plan together, together, and I'll use two petty issues that are coming up. My kids have field day tomorrow. My kids are going to have field day on their computer. They're going to log in and play in my backyard and compete against other schools, whereas I look at other, other little league, little leagues that are going on other fields that you guys can't even get the kids to play field day in a field. I think it's, it's ridiculous. Keith mentioned air conditioning. It's a, it's something that always gets pushed aside, but that definitely has to be looked upon because during the summer months while the kids were in school on the second floor of Carpenter, they were melting. But what about things like tents for the outside for kids or picnic tables to work during snack time? I know Mr. Carroll was frightened over the fact that pictures were taken of children sitting on the curb, but instead of recognizing the fact that the kids were sitting on the curb, she was worrying about child safety as opposed to what's going to happen to me. I actually asked my little kid, how are you sitting on the curb? They use their hand to break their fall before they sit on the curb and they use that very same hand to dip into their snacks. It's ridiculous. It's ridiculous. What else did I jot down? Capital outlay for the tents, accomplishment, but yes, 14 months were discouraged and going back to school for six weeks is not an accomplishment. No one in this audience and no one in this township is going to thank you for giving our kids six weeks of four hours a day when every township and every private school has gotten it correct. Mr. Sidedino, we've asked you countlessly, ask other townships what they're doing. You don't got to be a pioneer in this, but ask other townships how they're getting it done because they're getting it done. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Justin Di Bianca, two children, Miller School and also Salk. So rather than get on with the, with the grievances that obviously parents have, I just have one question. We went over the budget this evening, so the budget itself is 20, 21, 22. So there's an obvious anticipated idea of what that 22 school year looks like. Come September, can you, can you definitively say that things will change come September as far as now we're in half-day? Did you anticipate for full school or did you anticipate at half-school schedule continuation of what you have now? So based on executive orders now, if they change over the summer, what will happen come September? Like, are we factoring in a full day or are we still factoring in what we have now? That's my question.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? No, no, we're waiting. All of the residents will have a chance to speak and then we'll address, you know, we'll address everything. I just want to give everyone a chance to. I understand, sir. Yeah, no, absolutely. We'll address it. Absolutely. Anyone else? There's a, yeah, yes, yeah, at the end of the, at the end of the meeting, there's a hearing of the residents on any school district issue, okay? Okay. Okay, seeing no other, Mr. G, I thought that was, I thought you were coming up to speak. Okay, seeing no other residents, I'm going to close the hearing of the residents portion. Mr. Sidedino, did you want to say anything?
There's a few items that were brought up that I'll perceive as questions. One of the questions was in reference to filtration. The district has been and, and continues to plan for and pursue through a grant. We were, we were hoping to get the grant approved at this time for bipolar ionization in every classroom, which from the information that we're receiving is better than the HEPA filter system and is adaptable to all of our air transfer systems that we have within every classroom. The question that the gentleman had just asked, the 2122 budget is budgeted for a full day of instruction and it is our plan to have a full day of instruction. If there's some executive order that takes place next year that doesn't allow, allow us to do that, we'll adopt to that as well. But we are planning for a full day of instruction with all programs going forward for the 2122 school year.
Okay.
Can I comment on that? So, so on record or any changes, five full days come September?
That is the budget we have planned for, that is our plan.
Okay, so again, you're on record again for that. We go on full day of September with, and as long as you go, I understand, by as long as you go on our executive program now, full day come September. I just want to hear it from the fourth officer.
You don't have to hear it from me, you can hear it from the governor. He has stated that school next year will not include a remote option unless there is a medical requirement for a student or staff member. The one other thing, and the governor did announce today, and I, you know, I've heard it through a few parents, there are 228 school districts in the state of New Jersey that are now in five days a week. We are one of them. 450 are hybrid school districts where the students are home a day of the week. 72 are all remote districts. So as though we, people have said there's no progress towards any, we have moved towards the minority within the state of the 228th school districts that are five school days in school, in-person school days. Hybrid is only when you spend a day of the week at home. Thank you.
Mr. Merrick, can you please address, there was a question regarding the CARES Act money and I, I believe there was a question about what money, you know, we got money from COVID relief, can you please address that?
Sure, Mr. Carroll. So when the pandemic began last year in March, the state provided to the district approximately $460,000 for PPE equipment, masks, wipes, all that stuff, and we utilized all that money. In addition, there was ESER one funding that was provided to, to the district and it's, it's special revenue money. It's not part of the regular budget, so there are restrictions. There was about $700,000 that was provided to the district and we had to submit a plan to the state on how we were to use that. And what we did was we spent the majority of those funds to provide computers to all of the students in the district. In, in addition to that, there was a digital divide grant that is also related to the COVID situation where we did get an additional $700,000 and we purchased all computers to enable the remote learning that we've done. So over the last year, in order to implement what has been required to be implemented by the state is we've purchased at least 4,000 computers for the students to take home and, and we have provided internet access to everyone in the town who doesn't have it. So to say that we haven't used the money effectively, we, no, no, so let me just, just finish and then you can ask the question. We, we submitted our plan, the, the state advised us of what the funding was. We had to submit a plan to the state that they had to approve as to how we would spend it. They approved it and we spent it. Now, in the last 30 to 60 days, ESER II money has been, we've been notified that we've been, we will receive 2.8 million dollars of ESER II money, which again is COVID-related money, and we're in the process of developing a plan on how to spend that over the next two years. Part of that plan of what Mr. Sidedino just said is to provide the mechanism to our HVA system so that every single classroom in every building has its air cleaned and, and is free of any type of COVID virus or any type of mold situation. But that, that funding just was advised to us in the last 60 days and the plan is being developed. Once the plan is developed, it has to be approved by the state, and once it's approved by the state, we will move forward to implement that plan, but it's a two-year plan. But it's a two-year plan.
But the previous year, you had 4,000-
Thank you, Mr. Mara. I'm sorry, public portion is over. So if you'd like to address it at the end of the meeting, this is, we can't do a Q and A, but this is not a back and forth. I'm sorry. I know it's tempting. If you have any further questions, you can address it at the end of the meeting, okay? Okay, I think we got to all of the questions. Yeah, AC in schools, I've been wanting that for 20 years since my son was in Charot. My son is 27 years old right now. And I've been wanting that for a long time and it's always there. But you know, you also need the money to do that. And we're in a very difficult, you know, budgetary situation as Mr. Mara just presented everything. So yes, in an ideal world, we would have AC in all the schools. So, all right. I think we addressed everything, so we're going to move on. And I need a motion to adopt the 2021-2022 school year budget.
I'll move it.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Burns will second.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion?
Joe, I have a question. The state cut our state funding by $6 million, correct? Is there any anticipation of what the number might be next year? We know it's going to be higher, obviously.
Yeah, the reduction last year was 3 million. This year, we estimated it to be, initially estimated it to be 5 million. It came in at 6 million. But what COVID, what happened with COVID is, was our enrollment went down by about 400 or 500 students. We expect the enrollment to increase next year. But I would still expect an 8 to 10 million dollar reduction next year in state aid.
And toward that end, you had a significant amount of reserve to apply to the $6 million shortage this year, correct?
That's correct, yes.
That reserve is certainly not going to be that same size next year. That's a supposition on my part.
Well, it's to be determined. I don't know the answer to that. I mean, last year, we had, we wound up, after the financials were completed, we had sufficient reserves to cover the reduction this year. Now, last year, school closed totally on March 18th through June. This year, you know, we should have a similar amount of reserves available. But you know, it's to be determined at this point.
All right. And so again, I agree with you on the number of 400 or 500 that we've lost and how many we'll get back depending on where, you know, there's so many variables, what the health situation is going to be in the country in September and how many people, you know, will not return. Plus, the trend without COVID for the years, the 20-some odd years have been around the demographics has continued to still drop slightly regardless of COVID. 100, 125 kids next year. My point is, we did well this year to get the budget where it is. But I think there has to be nothing but vigilance in keeping the cost under control and looking at ways of producing other efficiencies, such as when you close cheese break school, you save between $750,000 for the, from the administrative overhead, plus you gain the $500,000 income from the lease, which puts you in a positive position for 1.25 million a year. And we need to try and work on other things like that because we sit with basically the smallest elementary schools in the county and that costs you a lot of money. We have to worry about the district as a whole. I know there'll be things that people don't like. But at the same time, the big beast in the room, the 800-pound gorilla is the, is COVID and the state cuts. So I think we have to do, we have to do more to try and save money besides. That's my opinion.
Any further discussion?
Madam President?
Yes, Mr. Dunn.
So basically, this budget for 2020, 21, 22, I think addresses the concerns of providing continued fine education for our children. You know, it's unfortunate that in today's world, politics plays a role on everything that happens in our lives. And unfortunately, I know that when the Christie administration was in place, they didn't enact certain things to redistribute state aid. They left it flat where districts like ours wouldn't be affected. Unfortunately, politics plays a role and the governor decided that it was time to redistribute the wealth. And now we're suffering from that and we're into year three if that's a question of funds. And I have to say, you know, I'm a little concerned that, you know, the way we got here today with the school issues, with not opening, closing, remote, that's one thing. But I have to say that this district has done a remarkable job with balancing a budget to ensure that the educational enrichment of our students isn't affected. And I have to say, this budget definitely is very, how can I put it? Well-constructed where the programs will not be cut in any way. At this point, over the last two years, we have lost approximately $9 million. And for us to be able to find ways to plug those holes and continue with the good education that we do provide, that's a remarkable job. Yes, there's criticism on one side, but there has to be praise on the other side. You know, a lot of us on the board, you know, may have disagreed with the process of the way we operated with the schools and COVID. But I have to say, I have to give the superintendent and the business administrator a lot of credit here because we could be suffering big time and we wouldn't be able to provide the services. So this budget is well-constructed. I am pleased to see it. We're going to be giving our children the finest education, even though politics has played a huge role in why we're $9 million flat over the last two years. And I'm nervous that next year is going to be a very difficult year because obviously this year, our budget was not impacted. We actually had reserved monies of $8 million, which helped us cover the $6 million shortfall. But like my colleague on the left side of the stage or the right side of the stage has said, next year is going to be a testament or a test of our will to see how well we're going to do budget-wise. And I'm nervous that we're going to be in a position next year where we will have to cut programs. So you know, I will echo what Mr. Weber said, is that we have to be conscious, we have to be aware, and we have to be very smart going forward because the tax man's going to be coming due next year and we're going to have to make sure that we could balance our budget. I will support this budget this year. I usually do support the budgets because I believe that the way the formula is constructed, it does leave Old Bridge in a very bad position because of us being an S2 district and being in that situation. So the 2%, I believe, is a doable number, provide that we continue with the excellent delivery and the exceptional education that we are providing. Yes, there's that concern that remote learning and in-school are two different situations. But ultimately, I think that, like Mr. Sididino said, come next year, we will be full-time and I believe that this budget is going to address all those concerns. So I will support the budget. I will vote yes. And let's see where we go from there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Anybody else? Ms. Ellis Foster?
Thank you. I have a few comments, but first I also wanted to address one thing. And I don't know if Mr. Sididino, if you can. I know a parent expressed frustration with no before and after care. And I wonder if you can just clarify that that is not, that we had the space available, but it's unfortunately, we don't offer that service. It's through the township. I wonder if you can just address that?
That is correct, Ms. Ellis Foster. The before and after care program that we have is in a shared service agreement with the township recreation department. They provide the means and the services for that through their own financial planning and grants that they receive. The resources are available, but they have said that it's a valuable program for them and they intend to anticipate having it next year. They just weren't providing it this year, for the remainder of this year.
Okay, thank you. And I also want to echo some of Mr. Dunn's comments. And I think, I commend Mr. Mara and his team. I know this is an arduous process. As Mr. Mara stated, I know that we are high in efficiency compared to many districts, especially those our size, and we run things on a very tight budget. I'm pleased that next year, we're still able to move to a block scheduling, which I think is going to enhance the education, especially in our middle school and in our high school, and that the administration, while dealing with the day-to-day, is able to find ways going forward to improve the education of our children. I also know that some of the funds next year, we are using on trying to fill the gap that we know all students have faced without being in school. And that's across the country, not only in Old Bridge and in New Jersey. But putting resources in that so that we can bring our children closer and close the gap, as well as a big focus on the emotional well-being of our students and increasing the services and the mental and behavioral health staff in our schools, which I think will be critical. So we know that as a community, this has been hard on everyone. Our children, our parents, our teachers, our paras, everyone. And it's really only by working together that we can continue to move forward. I know that the plan was not what everybody wanted. However, the plan we had, we put out in August. It was clear what our milestones were and I think we met them. And we continued as the positive cases decreased to increase the number of days in school. So I think that it is a solid budget. It does not cut programs, as Mr. Dunn stated, which I think is critical. We're offering all the extracurricular activities to our students that we know are so important to them. And all of our special education programs, we're expanding some of our remedial programs, which will be very important. So I think as difficult as the budget is, it is a solid budget and I also will be supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ellis Foster. Would anyone else like to, would anyone else like to speak? Took me a while to get that out. Nope. Okay, the one question that, or one thing that I would like you to clarify, Mr. Mara, is right now our tax levy is at 170, 107 million. The state is not, it doesn't accept that. The state wants our tax levy to be higher, correct?
Yes, the state funding formula that was implemented under the current administration indicates that the local taxpayer, based on the number of students, the wealth of the community, the local taxpayer should be paying roughly $120 million in the local tax levy and we're only paying 107. So their goal, when S2 came into effect, was to bridge that gap over a five-to-six-year period and it's been, it's been a painful period.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to clarify that because that's sort of the crux of the whole thing. The state has decided that, not us, the state has decided that Old Bridge isn't paying their fair share of taxes. That's the state. That's not us. So unfortunately, that's why all of this is happening with the S2 and the state aid cuts. So I just wanted to say that. Okay, as long as there's no other discussion, can we have a roll call, Mr. Mara?
Mr. Solakowski?
No.
Mr. Weber?
No.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Calley?
Yes.
Mr. De Prima?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
The vote is 6 to 2. The budget for 2021, 2021, 22 passes.
Thank you. All right, now we are on to hearing of the residents on any school district. So those of you that wanted to speak can come on up and say your piece. We've got five, you've got five minutes.
My name is Dawn Manning. I have two children that are no longer in your district because I chose to homeschool them this year rather than be a part of the nonsense that is happening. And I'm lucky enough to have the means and support to do so. But my concern, yeah, absolutely, this is nonsense. It's ridiculous. My children are much happier not being involved in your nonsense. Okay. My concern is for face masks being worn all day long. The New Jersey Road to Recovery Plan states that when a child is sitting at their desk and they can either be socially distanced or have those ridiculous Plexiglas things, they are allowed to take off their masks. But instead, you are choosing to force our children to wear masks that are probably dirty and disgusting. You know kids do not have the best hygiene. They are most likely touching whatever, then touching their face masks, breathing in those pathogens. Yeah, face mask, there's almost no, nobody seems to be asking, everybody's worrying about effectiveness. But really, we should be worrying about safety. New Jersey, you guys are forcing our children to wear the masks while in the classroom all day long. But are there any, is there any evidence that these masks are safe to wear in circumstances and environments for six-plus hours a day? If you're considering going back five, well, five full days a week next year, how are you going to have our kids wear face masks for 30 hours a week? Yeah, my kids won't be. Is this safe to children? What if the face masks are detrimental to our children's health? What if they are obstructing their breathing? What if the masks become contaminated with pathogens, considering that the children are touching anything and then touching their masks? What if they contaminate their masks and they develop a bacterial infection in their lungs? What if the mask becomes moist from long durations of use in a hot classroom? Some people don't wash their masks every day. Unfortunately, that's just a fact. What if there's mold growing in the child's masks and they develop a fungal infection in their lungs, throat, or mouth? What if a tiny fragment of material is inhaled into their child's lungs? You're not going to do, are you going to pay my kids' medical bills if my child comes with strep or with, really, anything? I have a letter to send to you because right now I'm emotional. But I have a letter that I will be emailing to you, Sididino. I will be emailing to the mayor of Old Bridge as well. Do you have any safety studies that have been done for the effectiveness of masks on children whose lungs are not developed fully to be wearing for 30-plus hours a week? Is this a question and answer or I just get to say my piece? Okay. I will be emailing this letter to all of you, but I really just wanted to avoid my concerns. Like I said, my children won't be a part of it. We're happy. We're enjoying homeschool. But not everybody, I understand, not everybody's lucky enough to have the means to do so. And I think it's ridiculous that you're involving in this social experiment with no safety. Hello, I'm Christine McLaughlin. I have four kids in this township. My two older ones, who are in sixth and fourth, I unenrolled to homeschool. I left my kindergarten child and my first grade child. So just touching on the base, listening to what she had to say. My first grader comes home daily and says she has to sneak to the bathroom countless times during the day to take breathing breaks. She cannot breathe. Every day she goes to school, mommy, I don't want to go, mommy. I can't breathe. So it's very upsetting that, oh, yeah. And then on Tuesday, she comes home and says during one of her breathing breaks in the bathroom, this is where my child resorts to go, she dropped her mask on the floor in the bathroom and then put it back on her face in fear of being screamed at for not wearing it. My kindergarten child came to my job, well, I'm not really working right now because I had to take a leave of absence because I have all four kids home. And I taught kindergarten in a private school in Jamesburg. My kindergarten kid came home to, came to work with me today just to witness what was going on, came home and said, mommy, I don't want to go back to my school. Keep in mind, I love Old Bridge Township. I love my school. But my child said after being there, mommy, I was allowed to work one-on-one with another student, next to them, touching them with their mask on, of course, inside.
them, touching them with their mask on, of course, inside. I can't do that at my school, mommy. I get yelled at if I go next to a peer in my classroom," shouldn't say peer. Then another statement was, "Mommy, when I went outside at your school, I was able to play with my friends without a mask and touch them." I feel like my children are being taught to fear other children. Stay away, don't go near them. She's becoming fearful of her peers in school, and it's gross. It's disgusting how my children feel, and I'm sorry, I love this township, but the way this is going about, it's just, it's not the right way for these kids. Why can I go to a bar tomorrow night, not that I go to a bar, but if I wanted to, how come I can sit at a bar and drink all night without a mask, but, but my children can't sit and get an education at a desk three feet apart without a mask on their face? It makes absolutely no sense. I don't understand why my children have to wear a mask solo at a desk when I can go to a bar and drink without a mask on, sitting right next to somebody. Where's the science? There's no science.
Anyone else?
My name is Gina, and I also actually had a son in Carpenter who's six years old. He was supposed to be in kindergarten, and I took him out to homeschool as well because just, it's disgusting what you guys are doing. I would like to start off by saying thank you to those who continue to support our children, you know who you are. Those that are doing the bare minimum for these kids, you also know who you are. We know who you are. Because of that, we also know enrollment is down, forcing many parents to take their children to Catholic school, private school, or even daycare or a childcare center. All of those places follow the same CDC guidelines you keep mentioning. How is it that they can have kids playing outside for recess? How is it that they can have an actual lunch and not just a measly snack that's dictated to them? Why are the teachers focused solely on the kids in the classroom, aren't the kids solely in the classroom, instead of juggling both a computer with kids as remote as well as kids in the actual classroom? Those that would like to stay home should be able to stay home and work remotely with the remote kids. It should be a choice, choice, and the freedom to choose, it's a beautiful thing. Last I checked, we live in America where there is such a thing called freedom. I think after this year, you will see more parents wanting school choice because of decisions from boards like you and failing the kids of the future generation. I would also like to know the science behind schools being open half-day versus full-day. Will COVID know when a child gets out of school at 1:15 or 3? Will COVID know when children are eating lunch or when they're eating a snack? Will COVID know when a child is walking the track after they eat their snack? Please stop cherry-picking scientific data. Since there are so many that took their kids out of this public school system due to the failure on your behalf, why are you trying to raise our taxes? I know I don't want to be paying for something that is not living up to the expectations of what they should be. Speaking of expectations, our children should never have been put in such a position to be treated like they were subhuman. To see kids spaced out on a dirty curb next to a sewage drain, eating their snack was appalling. It looked to me like they were prisoners of war or even animals. Why can't they eat their snack at a sanitized and clean desk? Or even outside, under a tent with tables or even mats or towels? There aren't any more restrictions in restaurants. People can take their masks off and eat at a table packed in a place like sardines, and yet our kids are pushed to the wayside. And I hear some kids eat while others stand there with our masks on waiting. That's so crazy to me. It sounds more like a punishment than anything. Why is it up to the parents to bring in towels? Shouldn't seating arrangements be available already from the CARES Relief Fund this school and others received? Where did all that money go? Where are the other lunch tables on wheels that fold up and go up against the walls? Why are there suddenly only two available? If you did all this planning, this should have been taken care of, but once again, it just shows the lack of planning you have put forth. It is sickening to hear and watch some of you applaud this failure. Jill DeCaro is running for town council. You accomplished nothing for these kids here in this town. What makes you or anyone think of, think anything for the town will be accomplished? All of you should have been fighting tooth and nail for these kids if you cared. This pandemic started in March, as we all know, so why did it take until January of this year for any mental health initiative to be taken? The inconsistency of the cohorts has done damage to these kids mentally and academically. There was no structure. Many kids did not do well with the remote learning. You gave us faulty streaming devices in the beginning of the year and literal garbage bags. That should have been a red flag right there to show how little you care about these kids. Start showing you care!
I just had just two follow-up questions in reference to the HEPA filters that you mentioned and the circulation in the schools. If you could address how that's going to be accomplished, the fact that there is no air system or free-flowing air in the schools. So I just can't comprehend how HEPA filters are going to be introduced to school systems without a free-flowing air system. The second question I had was referenced to the state tests that I believe were canceled or postponed. If someone can address how that decision was made and why were the state tests canceled? Was it to not uncover the lack of education that the children are receiving? If you can address those two questions, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Wait, wait till...
Hello, my name is Leonardo Marqueta, and it's a pleasure to finally see all you guys face-to-face. Dave, I thought we were going to see each other in court. I would first like to thank the three members of the board who have been advocating for our children since even before we got involved, Mr. Silikowski, Mr. Weber, and Mr. Giardano. We thank you 10,000 times over and over again. Now, for the rest of you, in a previous meeting, Dave indicated that six months ago, no one even knew my name. That's because the people here trusted you and the rest of the board. We trusted you to be able to make the best decision possible for our children. High-pressure situations reveal character, and yours have all been revealed. It's no longer 2019. People now know who you are, and people are talking. Do you think that what you are seeing in our group are the only ones that are paying attention? I have been contacted by people in this town who know you personally, and they are totally, truly embarrassed by the way you are all conducting yourselves. The best form of advertisement is word of mouth. You are all writing your own books with the way you praise each other during the last two meetings. Nobody on this board has done anything to merit praise, especially Dave. I have been contacted by teachers, both who work here and other towns, who are both disgusted with the way the board and Dave has been handling the situation. Jill DeCaro, you are running for town council. What would you have done if we contacted you regarding this issue? Would you have helped like Councilman Rizzoli, or would you have said, "At least your kids are getting educated"? You're also a real estate company owner. Do you tell your clients that you're the Board of Ed president and that you're a big reason why they're closed? Or are you lying to them, saying you're trying to fight for our kids? In this next statement, I am in no way, shape, or form trying to compare the situation of right now from what happened years ago in Nazi Germany. But however, we all know history, and we all make choices. We all know what happened during the Holocaust and wonder, how did they let that happen? It happened because people, probably some good ones, were just following orders and just did their jobs. And even though they knew what was going on was completely wrong, they continued to take people into those camps. You all up there have a choice to make. You see what's going on. You know that it's wrong, but you're allowing it to happen. You've allowed it to happen for far too long, and it's going to stop. It's your choice, which side of history do you want to be on? The last thing, the latest thing with this children eating on dirty curbs like animals just further shows you all had no plan, no discussion ever took place to accept how little effort. The hardest thing to accept is how little effort most of you gave. I would also like to say that across the street, there is a museum filled with Old Bridge history, and in that museum, there is going to be, your guys' names is going to be there. You're all going to be part of history because you were supposed to lead us through this time, and you failed. And I'm sorry to say, and I'm sure most of you guys up there, you're probably good people. Mr. Dunn, I respect your work with the fire department. I'm sure you're all good people, I'm sure you're good parents, I'm sure you're good grandparents, but what have you done? You failed us, you failed, look at these kids here, you failed them, you didn't just fail our kids. Look at them, sitting behind a computer, you failed them too. And now you want to talk about you're going to cut programs. Why don't you cut administration? There's too much administration at the top. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I'm sure you're all good people, I'm sure you're good dads, you're probably good brothers, you're good sisters, but you failed us, you failed this town, and you're all going to go down in history as that.
Anyone else? Excuse me, excuse me, Mr. Marqueta, you had your chance to speak. It's not your turn now, okay? You're very welcome. It's not your turn. Ma'am, you may speak. Go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Lynn Rios. I have a question for you, Ms. DeCaro, regarding your concern, your security concern at Carpenter with the kids being outside. Basically, what it is, is we're, are you more concerned now that that picture was posted around, or should you have been more concerned that these kids were out there to begin with? Because any stranger, some lunatic out there could have been passing by those kids and seeing them outside, and they could have been targeted. But because that picture went viral pretty much, that's when your security concerns stepped in. Why is that? That's what I want to know. Because I pass by that school all the time, and seeing that was disturbing to me because two of my kids go there. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Marina Newberry, question. You stated that next year, September, anticipated we're going back full-time. Are they going back full-time still on the streams? Because if they're going to be in the classroom, my concern is that my kid's staring at a screen for six hours, seven hours a day, and then coming home and staring at a different screen, where school is where they're learning, they're paying attention to the teacher, and the computers are really taking away from them. I have teams on my phone all day. I see chats between the students back and forth. Aren't they supposed to be learning? So I want to know if the streams are going to be gone come September.
Okay. Anyone else? This is the, I'm letting everyone speak, then I'll close the portion, this portion of the meeting, and then your questions will be addressed, just like always. Okay? Thanks. Anyone else like to speak? You can come up to the podium. You didn't speak for five minutes, so you have another minute.
This is on behalf of someone else asking, they're not here tonight. They would like to know, will the library ever be open again?
I'm sorry, which library are you speaking of?
Any school.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wants to speak? Okay, seeing no one else, I'm going to close the hearing of the residence, residence portion of the meeting. Whoops. And is, would anyone like to address anything that was said? You want to?
Madam President?
Mr. Dunn, go ahead.
Yes, I just want to say very clearly that I love the passion that is in this room. Obviously, there's parents and many community members are concerned about what has happened in the past, and, and I, and I kind of, you know, feel for them. You know, we're all in the same position. We all have students within the school district, and obviously, you know, they are voicing their concerns, and the concerns are very well heard. And I just want to say that there is an election coming up in November, and I think that there should be a few of the members of the audience should run for the Board of Education. If they feel this passionate that they can make a change and they can make a difference, then run. That's what's great about our society, that's what's great about our country. If you want to make a difference, run for the position, because quite honestly, over the years, we haven't had people run for the Board of Ed for various reasons. Well, they don't want to get involved, they don't have the time. Yes, it's a lot of time, but there's a lot of passionate people out there, very articulate, very intelligent, and they have a lot of good thoughts. So if you want to be part of the Board of Ed and make a difference and change, file your petition in July with the county clerk's office, run for the Board of Ed, and make a difference. We all try to do that up here. We try to do our very best for the community based upon information that we have. Listen, it's not an easy job, obviously, to be up here, listening to the discontent and the concern. Obviously, you're the public, you're a taxpayer, you have the right to do that. And quite frankly, we need more people who are going to fight for the children. And there's three or four people here who have come to the meetings, they've been here virtually, they've expressed their concerns and opinions. So if they have the energy now, let's take that energy and bring it back to the board, run for a position, and then voice your concern and fight for the children. That's what we're all trying to do up here, the nine of us. So I applaud you. I think that what you're saying has a lot of credence, it has a lot of validity, but please, run for a position here. There's three seats that are open, and make a difference. And that's what my suggestion is, because you know what? There's a lot of good information out there, there's a lot of passion. Bring it to the board, make us a better board. Thank you. And quite one more thing, I am pleased, excited to see everyone back together again. It's been too long, and thank you for the board for pushing the fact that we needed to reconvene as a board and get back in the front of the public, because that's our job. So thank you, the Board of Ed, the administration, and the public who attended tonight for our first meeting live. Thank you again.
Thanks, Mr. Dunn. Mr. Mara, did you have, you had something you wanted to say earlier, I believe?
The question was relating to how we would modify the HVAC systems. There is a, there's a Buildings and Grounds meeting next Thursday night, it'd be a Zoom meeting where the scientists behind this will be doing a presentation. But just generally speaking, what will happen is every HVAC unit we have in the district, whether it's a unit ventilator or a rooftop unit, will have a mechanism that's added to it, which will increase the filtration without changing the filters. One of the problems that we had in the district is that the filters were, let's say, a MERV eight, and in order to kill COVID, they had to be a MERV 15. We were unable to change the filters because we would burn out the motors in the HVAC systems. Now with this new mechanism that attaches to the units, their ionization mechanisms, I can't explain what they are, but if you want to understand what they are, next Thursday there'll be a meeting, and they do prove to be effectively removing COVID virus and mold from the classroom within 30 minutes of turning on.
I'm going to address that question for you, and we're waiting, obviously, this technology was developed for this particular situation in schools. Most schools, by state requirement from POIAQ, it's a state's requirement standard for fresh air in schools, so even if a classroom doesn't have air conditioning, there's a fresh air requirement within that, within every classroom. And the classrooms that don't have fresh air have a univentilator that circulates air from the outside, and it has to bring in a certain amount of fresh air from the outside into every classroom. So it's always cycling air. So even if the windows are closed, by administrative code, fresh air is being cycled into the air, it may not be chilled air from an air conditioner, but there's always air that has to be brought inside, according to code. Now, these sonic-ionic, I'm saying bipolar-ionic systems were created to attach to those univentilators to then pass the air, infiltrated air through them and not only take away COVID, you just say, okay, so what is, we'll do this for the future, but also minimizes the cold virus, the flu virus, mold, any others, other ways, that is, using bipolar-ionic technology to adapt to today's needs that was, I guess, necessitated by COVID. So that's the technology that we're using. It was recently developed for the schools, and we have applied for a grant to have it installed. Yes. Every classroom in Old Bridge has a system that either, if it's an HVAC system or a univentilator, that brings air in from the outside. I think as a minimum, I, we can get that information at that meeting, but I think the minimum is 20%. There was a question in reference to, I think, the same gentleman asked about state testing. The decision on state testing was a waiver from state testing perceived by the, or presented by the governor's office in partnership with the Department of Education to the federal government, and the federal government...
And the federal government approved that waiver and then the state passed on that requirement to us. The district did not apply for a waiver on testing. Last week at our meet, uh, last month at our meeting, we went through all of the district wide assessments that we do use and will continue to use, but the, at this point, the state assessment is being, I would say, the better word, postponed until the fall. There's a question about security concerns, whether people are, can see students outside. Carpenter School, every school has an armed officer outside the schools with cameras that not only have cameras inside the property, but on the exterior of the property, including the entryway of every, of every school. So from there, any, and it's recorded camera system, records passerby's cars that go by and as soon as they get on, on property and that officer's there and he's trained specifically. They are, the SLEOs, SLEO threes are specifically SLEOs or special officers for schools. Their powers don't exist outside the schools. Special twos exist, powers exist outside of the schools, but the special threes, their authorities are in schools. And they're all, well, the majority of the SLEO threes, they're all retired police officers. Special twos can be a retired police officer or an officer who put himself through the academy. We have a, a combination of both at all of our schools. I, I don't want to get into a situation where we're having the, the, okay. Recession can take place anywhere on the, on the property and they have recess and gym in front of the building, outside the building. Their snack, their snack break, mask break that they're taking is based upon concerns from other parents, many parents reaching out, their camp, pictures are being taken. We also had the concern that the attention that was brought by those pictures being taken would be outside groups coming in and also taking pictures or even media outlets coming in, taking pictures of our students at that particular school. So that was a precaution taken by the school administration. The question about streams, whether they'd be here forever, you know, pre-COVID, everybody would ask, you know, are you getting computers for the classroom? Are we going to have computers? How come there's not enough computers? Our, our kids are losing because they don't have enough computers as compared to this district has computers. There's always going to be a one-to-one element. Will there, a time spent on the computers be less? Sure, but there'll always be an element of students doing writing on there, students do creating on their computer and having the one-to-one access to do it. In the, in years past, prior to COVID, they'd have to go to a computer station within the classroom to work on any computer work they're doing, to do any research that they, they were doing. Now that they have their own and, you know, when we get back to that semblance of normalcy, you know, when we're not in rows anymore and we're learning centers in which the basics of education going forward, as we've always wanted for our students to work in those collaborative, there'd be, you know, research settings in which some were using the stream, some were working hand in hand in partnership and creating something tactile with their, with their hands, others were doing reading from books. And we'll get to all, we'll get back to all of that. A computer will always be a particular part of a classroom, but not the main part of, of instruction. There was a question about libraries. We have worked with the libraries as part of something that the teachers can use to go into and use a lot of the grant money that we receive to make the multimedia centers where not just books, but hands-on learning devices, robotics and so forth. That, well, a portion of that was actually a grant from DuPont organization out of Cervel, which we continue to expand our multimedia libraries and that'll always be part of it. Will it be a situation where they're going back to where there's the, um, the card catalog and you're looking at books that way and pulling out books that way that the district librarian? No, I don't know many districts that have libraries set up that way anymore. They're, they've become multimedia centers for, for student learning and that'll be the condition on which ours will continue to expand as well.
So...
Mr. Parton, do you want to address masks?
Do you want to address them up? Mr. Parton will address that.
Yeah, we can address masks. The, the New Jersey Department of Education in consultation with the Department of Health handed down the lengthy road back policy that everybody has seen for the last year. And our agreement with it and your agreement with it is really everybody's opinion.
Can you?
Um, excuse me. On, on page three of this document, which is handed down from the Department of Ed to every school district in the state, every public school district in the state, certainly the points that private schools are doing things differently? Yes, of course they are. Uh, and, and that's their decision. But it says expressly that all students are required to wear face coverings at all times unless doing so would inhibit the student's health on an individual basis. So at this point, and until it changes, which, excuse me, which?
Ma'am, ma'am.
You're, you are reading from a different document that may be a CDC recommendation, but yes, page 19, but this is these policy that is handed down to school districts from the State Department of Education, for better or for worse. I'm not telling you how I feel or how you should feel about this document. I'm simply telling you what it says. And it says that in schools at this time, masks are required.
Okay. All right, guys. Okay. Okay. All right. This is a very, I understand, I understand this is a very passionate and emotional topic. I really understand it, but as has been explained, that we have rules that we have to follow as Mr. Parton, I don't know, Mr. Parton, Mr. Parton, I don't know if you were done?
Yes.
With your explanation?
Yes.
Okay. Did anyone hear what Mr. Parton said? Okay. Because I, and again, I understand that this is an extremely emotional time, but what it, what Mr. Parton is saying to you is that we have rules that we have to follow. Yes, we do. Yes, we do. I'm sorry that you disagree with that, but it's the fact. We have rules that we have to follow and we are a state school. Okay. So I'm going to move on to a couple of questions that were addressed on me. Uh, my name was mentioned, so, um, Mr. Marqueta, what would I have done if you reached out to me if I was a town council member? Don't want to get into that because this is a Board of Ed meeting. However, what I will say is, first thing I would have done is I would have reached out to the administration here and I would have found out the facts. That didn't happen at all. I can tell you for an absolute fact that not one member of the people that you're speaking with reached out to anyone on the Board of Education or anyone at administration to find out what was going on. So that's what I would have done first. Then I would have taken it from there. Next question, Ms. Rios. School safety? Yes, 1,000%. I was outraged and I will be outraged again if it happens again. You take a picture of our students on school property and you post it to the internet? You're going to see my outrage, period. Always. Okay, I'm not doing a back and forth, but I was interested and I'm going to tell you. I made... Okay. I made one comment on Facebook because a friend tagged me. Excuse me. You know what? I'm not going back and forth. We're going to end this. If you'd like to speak with me outside of the meeting, I'd be glad to speak with you, but right now, I'm going to move to adjourn the meeting. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Burns will make the motion.
Burns, can I have a second? Can I have a second? I have a motion to adjourn. Can I have a second?
Call your second.
Okay, thank you. All in favor?
Closed. Meeting is closed at 1:30.
Meeting is adjourned.